Good evening and welcome. I call to order the August 7th, 2014 meeting of the City of Bellingham Planning Commission, and ask that everyone silence all electronic devices before we begin. Heather, would you please call a roll?
Tom Krenstad.
Here.
Jeff Brown.
Here.
Ollie Tyche.
Here.
Garrett O'Brien.
Here.
Phyllis McKee.
Here.
Sarice Noah.
Here.
Steve Crooks.
Here.
Great. First on the agenda is approval of the meeting, minutes of the meeting of June 19th this year. I trust everybody has had a chance to review. Are there any notations, questions, concerns? Can we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of June 19th meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now we come to the public comment period of the meeting. At this time, we offer the public an opportunity to address the commission on any subject other than that which is the main topic of conversation tonight, with the rezone request related to the 10 acres in Area 1 of the Meridian Neighborhood. Put my teeth in upside down, I think. So if you want to talk about Honey Boo Boo or anything else for three minutes, the table is yours. Anybody? Anybody? Nobody stepping forward will close the public comment period, and we have come to the public hearing. But before we begin this item, I'd like to remind the commission that this is a quasi-judicial matter, and therefore, we need to take a moment to get the following on record. Is there any member of the commission that objects to another member's participation? No. Is there any member of the commission that has an interest in the property? No. At this time, I would ask any member of the commission to place on record the substance of any communication that has taken place outside of this hearing. We'll start off with the applicant presentation, so I don't have a name in front of me, so introduce yourself and have at it.
Okay. Hi, I'm Dave Siegel. I'm with Meaden Hunt, and I'm representing the applicant, PMF Investments. In general, the presentation is going to be in support of a site-specific rezone of the eastern 10 acres of Area 1 Meridian Neighborhood to allow the city's planned industrial uses. A new zoning sub-area, Area 1A, will be created in the Meridian Neighborhood. This is a, this is a picture that came out of your packet here. I thought it was a good one to kind of depict the surrounding zoning, the residential to the north, and then the industrial there to the south, and then also to the east of the project. For the most part, a lot of the areas 3 and 5 obviously are heavy commercial retail areas, where a lot of the rezone there to the north is undeveloped. This next photo here is an aerial background, and this is a much closer up view of the parcel in question. And what you see there are the parcel lines, and the yellow hatching depicts the proposed zone 1A, and then there are some contouring, and then some of the wetlands that exist right So because this rezone is part of a number of other land use applications, I don't know how many exactly, it's five or six, this particular presentation's going to be simple and kind of to the point of the code in relationship to the rezone itself, and there's a lot of other aspects associated with development, and traffic, and wetlands, and a lot of other things that are all part of other permits, and so I'm not really going to touch on them all that well, because there will be an opportunity to do so. I'm gonna have to shut up my computer here. It's a, there we go. It's a silenced electronic piece now. So I'm gonna start off with item number one, was is it consistent with the comprehensive plan or corresponds to a concurrent comprehensive plan amendment? And the comprehensive plan for the area is industrial, and this will keep it as industrial. Currently, the zone has the Watcomb County light industrial zoning requirements, and that particular zoning and uses actually restricts a lot of uses that are consistent with the other areas in the industrial zone nearby, in those areas 3 and 5. And this revision will allow the uses that are consistent with the Bellingham industrial zone, and these allowed uses are consistent with the comprehensive plan. So for question number one, is it consistent with the comp plan? Yes. What we're trying to do here will actually bring this particular zoning into consistency with the comprehensive plan. Number two, how will it affect health and safety or the general welfare? The allowed uses are consistent with Bellingham industrial zone, and the benefits to health and safety to allow uses consistent with the Bellingham zoning code. So most parcels with this industrial zoning would allow the uses that we're asking for an allowance, and so kind of through that nexus is the health and safety there, as opposed to it being zoned one way and then go into a radically different zoning where this would be a much larger question. So this is bringing this into more consistency with adjacent zones. Okay, is it in the best interest of Bellingham residents? Number one, it makes the zones uses consistent with the comp plan. The retail uses, now allowed, will provide family wage jobs, and the projects that come in here will have to contribute to infrastructure in one way or the other, which is much needed in this area and a benefit to the residents. And the retailers, the commercial retailers, will produce less pollution than some of the permitted industrial uses. Or if this rezone were not to go through, then without the, these permitted uses, then it would restrict it to industrial uses, which are, could result in higher pollution Is it suitable for development? The site has got access to mahogany, the future mahogany. It's contiguous with other commercial developments, the utilities for infrastructure nearby, and the rezone removes restriction on uses. So the parcel when redeveloped is suitable for development. Not to go too in-depth into the critical areas, because as I say, we have a critical areas permit in, along with the planned development, but one of the aspects here is that the, a portion of this rezone parcel will be partitioned off and left for the higher quality wetlands that are on the site. And that has to do with its suitability for development. Is that the portion that's suitable for development is what's a part of some of the Public services, once again, utilities nearby, Mahogany Avenue and Arctic Avenue are funded and soon to be designed, and there is a regional stormwater facility that is in design and will begin construction in conjunction with these projects that are coming up next summer. Impact on adjacent uses. The uses in the vicinity are residential and commercial, and the rezone would be consistent with the uses and do not have an impact. Allowed uses are less intensive than the industrial uses. So the contiguous parcels to the west, those are, will remain with the industrial overlay and will allow development of something industrial. And then to the, to the east of this parcel is all commercial. And to the north of it is a residential area. I don't have the density right off the top of my head, but I think there may be some multifamily uses, but anyways, it's, the comprehensive plan has that as part of it. So in looking at it in the light of the comprehensive plan, it's, it doesn't have a, this rezone is consistent, doesn't have an impact on the adjacent uses. The rezone is appropriate because it will correct an inappropriate restriction of uses, and I say that because it had the Watcomb County land use table as opposed to the City of Bellingham's industrial table, allowed uses. And the allowed uses will implement the policies of the comprehensive plan, which is to allow the, the uses with the rest of the industrial zoned parcels. And this is my last slide. Here, obviously, we think this is the right thing to do for the city, and this is a picture of Kelsey Creek Center at 148th and Main Street. That mentees there is where my family usually goes after my daughter's cheer practices. This development here was done by the client, PMF, and this was originally kind of a blighted area of Bellevue and failing businesses in a lower-income area, a lot of people on fixed incomes. Kelsey Creek was going right through it in a Creosote line culvert, and the proponent here came in and redeveloped this parcel, redid the Kelsey Creek culvert. The parking lot you look at there has LID features such as rain gardens and other items, and is now a vibrant center for the community, and I thought I would point that out. Oh, and also, this was a, we removed a concomitant zoning agreement on this particular parcel through a rezone, and this was the result of that rezone. And with that, is the end of my presentation, and I'll be happy to take questions.
Any questions from the commission? Then it looks like it's staff's turn. Kathy?
So you still like being close, but do I still need to be close? Okay. So thank you. Kathy Bell Planning. I don't think we've met. Hello. So that may date how long I've been for the Planning Commission, and Phyllis, we have met on, on different occasions. So thank you for all coming this evening for this consideration. Just to kind of give you an overview and summary of the staff report, the applicants did submit their land use applications together with their rezone requests. The city accepted their land use applications premised in with a full understanding that we obviously can't render a decision on those land use applications until such time they have a zoning that permits their proposed land use development. And they are aware of the risks that, you know, they, they are by, you know, that they incur by submitting their land use applications concurrently prior to this decision. However, having said that, what that has done is it's given the city the opportunity to review a full-level detailed analysis of a rezone, which we don't typically have the opportunity to do. And so what it's done is through the traffic analysis, through the wetland review, we've been able to truly identify what a development proposal could look like there. And in doing that, in the proposed zoning table, we were able to identify some needs, and we've imposed them as prerequisite considerations, future participations, road constructions, those types of things that we know and feel very confident that regardless of how this property is developed, those are things that we should consider. So I feel we were able to have a much more thorough review and present to the Planning Commission and ultimately to the City Council a recommendation to support the rezone. Staff has reviewed the applicant's material, and we did review their responses to the decision criteria. We have supplemented those responses in our staff analysis. We believe that the applicants have justified the decision criteria, and along with staff supplements, we do believe that those have all been met. And just for the record, those decision criteria are in BMC 2019-030, which is the rezone criteria, the rezone portion of the Bellingham code. Just to make sure that we have all the information in front of us, there should have been issued two additional public comment letters. One was from Resources dated August 4th. I believe that one went to you via email. The other was a letter from the City of Ferndale that was actually in response to the DNS or the SEPA determination that was issued for the rezone portion of the proposal. So I want to make sure you have the complete record. After issuance of the staff report, I did receive some correspondence from the Planning Commission just asking for clarification of some of the items in the staff report. And one of those questions or items that came up in discussion is to at least present why this is not a spot rezone and that it is a site-specific rezone. Our legal analysis of this is determined that it is a site-specific rezone and it is not a spot rezone. We are not proposing to change the zoning of the property. It is planned industrial now. It will be planned industrial if the rezone is approved. What we are doing is we are asking for additional land uses to be attached to the existing zoning, and our process or means by doing that is through this, is a site-specific rezone. A spot rezone, as we understand it to the best of what we can of what GMA talks about, is if you were in the middle of a single-family zone and you wanted to rezone the middle of that, like to industrial uses, there's no consistency or compatibility to that industrial use and that residential use. Those are the things that GMA says we should not do or shall not do. So we don't believe that that is the situation, and we do believe that it is a site-specific quasi-judicial rezone. Some of the other issues that we have addressed is we did send you the zoning table for comparison, and we also, of the existing zoning table of Area 1 and the permitted uses that are attached to that. We were also asked to discuss, there's a table in here, exhibit or attachment in here. It was just a comment that was made, and I wanted to address it, and that is attachment E, and the question is, I'm sorry, 20. Why is this exhibit so old? It still shows the guide Meridian Neighborhood. Well, the reason it's so old is this is straight from the comprehensive plan, which was in 2006, and that's what our city looked like in 2006. So we haven't by nature gone through the actual comprehensive plan document and updated every table or every exhibit in the comp plan when we do annexations, and when we did our northern neighborhood boundary reviews and all of that. So to help that clarification, what this is just trying to show is where those urban villages were previously identified within the city. And if there will be new locations with our update that will be proceeding soon, then obviously, we will have an updated map that we will use the correct boundaries at that To address some of the other questions, one is just, there was a confusion of staff referenced a certain attachment showing like the regional, kind of what, it was a description of what was happening in the area. It talked about Costco, it talked about PMF, it talked about the regional stormwater facility, and it referenced Exhibit C when possibly it could have referenced a better exhibit. I think the information is there. If you have any additional questions or want clarifications, we can certainly provide that. What we're just trying to show is that this is a very dynamic area right now, and there's a lot going on. There's a lot that, applications that are in, there's a lot of applications that are, have been approved, there's a lot of construction going on, and there's a lot of future proposals out there. So we're just trying to give you the big picture of what's happening out there. Just to make a few notes of reference, and one of the things that the exhibit actually that Mr. Siegel showed, and that is on, and that's the one that shows all the surrounding zonings, because I think that's actually a very compelling exhibit, and that's on page And what that shows, if you look at the map and you, and you read the legend to the right of that, is Area 1 right now is the only one that does not allow a city permitted use. All other surrounding areas are subject to city permitted uses. Obviously, the residential doesn't include the industrial uses, but it's still the city residential uses. When we annexed Area 21 along with Area 20, it was a conscious effort made by staff not to follow the same procedures that we had done when we annexed much of the West Bakerview area, and that was to limit it to Watcomb County uses. We have found it is a challenge to decipher and to interpret. There's an expectation they're gonna get to do what they got to do in the county, but it's difficult for staff to know what they would do in the county, and we're not gonna ask the county what they would have done, and so it's, it's just really complex. So when we initially met with the applicants, we felt that by incorporating the city's planned industrial uses, it actually made it more consistent with the surrounding existing Brent will speak after me, and he will give the Planning Commission sort of a general overview of how we consider both the rezone and site-specific or land use applications in terms of how we look at transportation analysis. He will also give you an overview of the efforts that the city and other jurisdictions are making, not only in the city limit, but looking at Slater I-5, looking on the other side by the airport, and just kind of giving you a general overview of the transportation planning that is going on. So he will address some of staff's comments in here that Mr. Crooks brought up about, you know, the chicken, what comes first, chicken or the egg, and he'll be able to tell you what the funding is for mahogany and why, how it's reliant on Costco and all of So in summary, the rezone is the consideration that is for the Planning Commission this evening. The land use applications are administrative. Staff is asking you, the Planning Commission, to approve, or to forward a recommendation to the City Council to approve the site-specific rezone request of the eastern 10 acres of Area 1 of the Meridian Neighborhood, and to put that form or that recommendation into the form that's attached to the staff report, which is the findings in addition to the draft ordinance. With that, I don't have anything else to add. And if you can ask questions of me now, or of Brent, and Brent can come up and speak, or you can wait, I mean, we're, we're open to whatever the Planning Commission would like.
Anybody want to hold their feet to the fire? Garrett?
I just had a question on the zoning. So when the property was annexed, it just assumes the zoning that was previously in place, the Watcomb County zoning, it doesn't change zoning into sit, to be consistent with city zoning?
So a lot of what happened, and a lot of it started with the Iron Gate industrial area, is when we annexed the, the Iron Gate industrial area, which is to the east of us on Bakerview, there was actually an annexation agreement that happened to where the property owners wanted to be in the city, but yet they didn't want to lose any rights and privileges that they had by being in the county. So we actually made this agreement, and it got translated as comparable zoning, that they could maintain and develop under the current uses, but they would be using city process. And so as we continued to annex, that's the process that we did, because we talk about annexing properties with consistent zoning, or comparables.
We, sorry, Greg Ockit Planning, we had an agreement with the county that we would annex at comparable zoning. So that's how this happened, that's how a lot of areas got annexed. That, that agreement has been changed since these areas were annexed, so we can, we won't find ourselves in this position again where we're trying to convert county zoning to city zoning. We'll just assign city zoning to areas that we annex.
Phyllis?
Yes, Kathy, I just have a curiosity question. Do we have any kind of a timeline on the build-out on this? And the other part of that is, is there anything in the wings for what would happen with the current Costco structure?
So the first point of clarification is this is completely and solely independent from Costco, so that I want to make sure is very clear. But we wanted to give you an idea of what was going on in the area. So if Costco does not proceed and the rezone is approved, then PMF Investments could proceed with the development, and that would be at their, their own timeline. So I don't have that, that may, the timeline may be a better question to the applicant.
Thank you.
Jeff?
So I had a couple of questions. One was on the table that was emailed to us on a comparison of the City of Bellingham Plan Industrial and the Watcomb County existing. I noticed the title says "Heavy-Impact Industrial," but all of the language in there are "Light Industrial."
Yes.
Light-Impact Industrial. So is that a typo, or is there actually, was the Watcomb County zoning that was adopted "Heavy-Impact Industrial" with restrictions that essentially meant it was light impact?
That was my oversight that Ollie caught, that I haven't yet. So the thing that is actually good to show you, that I'm gonna turn my oversight into a positive, because I can do that. The zoning actually prohibits these fabrication uses which are heavy-impact industrial. The rest, I did compare to the other zoning, to the other attachment, one of Area 1 that's in the zoning table, and those uses are fairly consistent. So, and which even shows more so that our planned industrial uses, it are much more compatible to the range of uses in terms of manufacturing wholesale as those industrial uses.
Okay, and I had, the second question I had was, I know that we've heard a lot about the erosion of the light industrial land use inventory, and it seems to me that originally there was a lot of desire for that whole old Highway 99 section that goes out to Thomas Road to be an industrial corridor back when incinerators were being built there and, and other fairly high-impact facilities. And I was wondering what thought has been given to sort of as that area goes out, whether Ferndale gets it or Bellingham gets it, and as, as that corridor is pulled into the city and Area 21 gets further developed, what is actually gonna happen there? Is it gonna be maintained as an overall industrial facility? And if so, what is the interface between that and then the residential that's in Area 20, and then the changes in zoning that we were talking about where there's gonna be the commercial corridors moving north from Bakerview? And it seems like there's a whole interface in there that I'm assuming is planned at some level, but it's like industrial versus single-family residential, or residential versus commercial moving north. How does it all work?
It's almost spooky, your question is almost spooky, and I say that because we, we have a standing meeting that we do to talk about areas that are having have a standing meeting that we do to talk about areas that are having, or experiencing a lot of development, a potential development, and the very issue that you brought up almost identically was asked about three, four weeks ago. And the mayor was involved in that conversation, and that is something she's very conscious of and wants us to further explore in more detail exactly with what you're saying. And the question was, are we going to expand this rezone request into a legislative and include all of Area 1, and to do the very thing that you've just asked, or is that for another day? Because it's a much more expansive review and analysis, and we decided, the mayor decided, not we, we, she decided, that that's going to be left for a different day. One of the things we do know that we did discuss is that the interface with the residential and the industrial, because they can compete, or they can conflict at, in different ways, is there are a lot of environmental features out there, one being the head water to a creek, and so, that in itself is going to be a very nice buffer from the residential to the industrial. So, we don't yet know how that area is going to develop, it's kind of a hodgepodge right now when you drive up and down Pac Highway of what's out there. The intent with this rezone is not to do away with the existing industrial uses, but yet to allow a broader range, and that is what we do in the other areas surrounding in Areas 3 and 5, where we allow the Waukam County's gateway industrial, and we also allow planned industrial and planned commercial of the city zoning. So, it's, we're broadening the opportunity, wondering, you know, what will go there. But we appreciate your question, and we're going to be exploring that same thing. And one of the, we were considering taking this as an opportunity to possibly also look citywide in addressing the whole Waukam County uses of 1996, and kind of doing a whole cleanup of that. But again, we're not ready to go there yet, and so, we focused and accepted their application as a site-specific. Does that, does not answering it, but we're going there.
Yeah, I'm good with it, thanks. I may pick this up again when we get her a general discussion, but that's good, thanks.
Anyone else? Ollie?
Well, I had two questions, but one of them was almost the same question that Jeff was asking about, why we didn't choose to look at the whole Area 1, because now it's the last one left that we haven't touched in this area. So, the other question I have related to that is, is there a reason, when we do these, why we keep the reference to the Light-Impact Industrial county zoning in the zoning table? Because it looks to me, from the comparison, like the planned industrial covers everything that's in the Light-Impact Industrial, and I've noticed we've done that in all these areas where we've rezoned it. Is there any reason why?
That could be the planning commission's choice. Some of the uses that are permitted under Waukam County, there are more, is a broader range of industrial uses.
So, that is the case?
It is, there is a little bit of a broader range, yes. The primary difference that we certainly did not hide in our staff analysis is that the planned industrial does allow commercial retail, which the Waukam County's Light Industrial does not. So, that is probably the largest distinguishing difference between the two, but there is a small difference in the permitted uses of, or the industrial uses as well.
Thanks, that explains it.
Anybody else? Next step from staff.
Hi, I'm Brent Baldwin, I'm the Development Manager for the Public Works Department, so I think while I'm introducing here, I'll throw up a map of the area just to make it a little easier. So Greg and Kathy asked me to, to come tonight to talk about kind of what's going on in the area from a transportation aspect, what planning's been done, and walk through some of the projects and where we're at with those upcoming, and then also talk about a little bit how we look at transportation issues during the development cycle, the development process. Let's see if I can find city ID. So, what's going on right now up there? As you know, if I zoom in here. So, the location we're talking about is this area, this is the overpass over I-5. As you're probably aware, we finished a construction project there this last year that actually added a lane westbound, which added a tremendous amount of volume actually for the capacity of the road. That was the first phase of a value planning study that was done between WashDOT, the City of Bellingham, the port, the county. There's private entities involved in that, and actually involved in the funding of that, being Fred Meyer. So, that was, that was kind of Phase 1 of that plan, when WashDOT wanted to take a look at that interchange and say, okay, we know that this is an old interchange, we know that we need to look at trying to fix this, and they knew from a previous study that the ultimate fix is blowing up the entire thing and redoing a single-point interchange, which is extremely expensive. So, we, as the city, asked them to take a separate look at it and say, okay, what else can we do? Are there some phasing things that we can achieve that are within our realm of funding that'll make a difference? So, the number-one thing off of that was the improvements to the bridge itself. So, there's multiple projects in this area that we've adopted into the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, which is an annual plan that we do with the city council that adopts future construction projects, then we can go after grants, go after funding sources to build those projects. One of them associated with that same value planning study was a northbound on-ramp to I-5 on the correct side of I-5. So, basically taking off from approximately the existing lights signals, and running down, and then merging underneath. So, that is in the plan. We're working with WashDOT right now to do what they call a IJR, which is an Interchange Justification Report, which is something the federal government requires our state to do. We're hoping to work with them this coming year on that. It's kind of a lengthy process, but that's, that's a big desire of ours, and something we're working, working strongly towards. Other projects in the six-year tip, Arctic Avenue, which used to be what they called Dover, which is here. So, this general location is the location you were asking about, the Costco proposal is. Part of the Costco proposal was that they would actually extend an arterial street basically in this alignment from the existing signals at the Fred Meyer entrance all the way up to the Mahogany right-of-way. That was placed on the six-year tip. We're working with Costco to get that constructed as they develop, and we'll move forward with that. In conjunction with that is the Arctic Avenue, which is this right-of-way here, which is just directly behind this rezone application. We are currently actually out to RFQ, which is a Request for Qualifications for Firms, to help us design that road. We've got funding, several funding sources that are dedicated to that already, and we are intending, I'm moving forward with the construction of that in the next year. So, that's, that's something that's on the front burner, shall we say. West Bakerview and Northwest, the existing intersection, we're doing safety improvements to that, that'll actually allow that, there's a long right-hand drop lane right now that goes onto West Bakerview. That'll continue through the intersection, provide more volume to the area to allow less congestion, hook up to the Aldrich Road right-turn lane, so it'll be a seamless transition to get around in the area. And then the final bigger project is actually out of the Cordada area, Horton Road extension to Aldrich, which, everything we're doing out here is trying to achieve better east-west connectivity. Right now, Bakerview's the one, and that's why you see the volumes due on Bakerview. So, all of the city's plans really look at how do we connect, interconnect different arterial linkages up in that region to improve traffic flow, to give people additional ways to get around. So, Horton Road is actually in design right now, we don't, we aren't fully funded on it, but we're working, working on it currently, so it's in the work plan for the, for the engineering group.
Excuse me, what are those, are those two-way traffic counts, 24-hour?
No, no, I'm sorry, these are just addresses, yeah, there's no traffic counts on this. It's just our mapping software that we use. And then finally, you know, another, another project that's going on, you might have seen it in the paper today, is up at Slater Road. The county is working with the state, and actually, there's the city and I believe Ferndale are all going to be contributing to a project, including, other contributors will be some of this, these developments that are being proposed. Currently, what they're, they're talking about installing is some sort of a modified roundabout design that will relieve some of the backups that are occurring onto I-5 and that kind of thing. So, that's, that's actually happening this year with the county. So, in addition to all those projects that are actually planned and moving forward in this area, in response to not only the growth, and the kind of exciting development that Kathy was talking about before, but the plans that have been in place for a long time to try to guide development, this kind of development into these areas, there's also a collaborative group working through our council of governments, which include WashDOT, the city, the county, Ferndale, the tribes, all working on looking at that next phase of I-5, so every, from just south of Bakerview all the way up through Ferndale, to really help guide future projects. We know that the region is growing, and we're trying to address that early on so that we can work towards doing improvements, have development contribute to improvements so that we can still continue to stay within our level of service, levels that we're trying to shoot for in our arterial streets. So, that's kind of a big picture of what's going on as far as projects go. The other thing that Kathy had asked me to do is, even though this is a rezone, and David was correct, the requirements for mitigation and improvements and things like that, that comes at a different permit stage, which is the development stage, but because they submitted both on this, they also submitted a traffic analysis for us. So, the way, there's, there's multiple steps in our development review that deal with transportation, there's really four, and we usually show this kind of puzzle piece that they all fit together. So, one is a concurrency review. Our concurrency program deals with person trips, so it doesn't just look at how many cars can fit on the road, but it also looks at connectivity of sidewalks, transit availability, that kind of thing. A project of this size goes through a concurrency review, receives a certificate that's good for a year, and as long as they work and pull permits for that project within that period of time, then the concurrency review stands. Larger projects like this, so projects that produce 50 PM trips or bigger, create traffic analysis, a TIA. All of the hotels, the Costco, this project, there's actually a re, or anexation that's being proposed just across the freeway, all of those have done TIA's. The way our TIA's work, they actually build upon each one of them, so whether they're built or not, if they're approved ahead of you in line, you have to consider those background trips as if they exist when you do your analysis. So, that way, we feel like that's the best way to really get a clear estimation, a clear picture for moving forward of what the real true impact's going to be. If all these things that have been proposed actually get built and actually are filled up, then what's this next one going to do? So, that was, that was a basis of their traffic analysis. And then, those individual traffic analysis, they're based on trip generation rates, so different types of land uses will generate different types of traffic at different times. So, we have standards set within our code that details how analysis is supposed to be done. So, they followed those, those directions from our code, created a traffic analysis, created a list of mitigation factors that will allow this development as proposed to be able to be built and not overburden the traffic system over the acceptable level of services, excuse me, level of service that the city council has established. So, in addition to that, so we've got those two things, there's also the requirement for frontage improvement, so any, any street that the property abuts on, the development is required to build their side of the street to full standards, full arterial standards in our case. So, in this case, it would be the Pacific Highway frontage, so curb gutter sidewalk, bike lanes, everything like you've seen in urban arterials, and then also on the Mahogany. So, either construction or participation in our project, most likely participation, will occur for their, that frontage of the property that they're needing for the development. Then the fourth step is transportation impact fees. So, we charge transportation impact fees for all uses within the city. They're based, again, on trip generation, they're just under $2,000 per trip. I don't have the exact number that this development would create, but it's, it's a substantial number that would be generated from that. So, from a development standpoint, that's how that works. Again, this is the rezone part of it, so it doesn't really trigger at the rezone, but it does, and it is right now during the development review. But I think that's what the planning guys wanted me to cover.
Thanks, Brent.
Yep.
I think I understood how we're trying to keep from death by a thousand cuts as far as the traffic goes. What is the level of service that's acceptable on West Bakerview now?
Well, it's based on what we call Level of Service E, which is substantial delay, and that, that was a conscious decision when the comprehensive plan was being established, that we don't want to build roads to have empty roads. There's a high cost of developing infrastructure, and when we develop infrastructure, we want to make sure it's used, we want to make sure you can still get through, but there are going to be times of day that it's acceptable to have backups. And so, under the Bakerview area, and actually all of, all of Bellingham, Level of Service E is heavy traffic loads. It's not gridlocked, but it's heavy traffic loads, with the potential of, at peak times, having to wait through maybe a couple signal cycles and things like that. Again, with their traffic analysis, they did, the whole corridor is reaching those limitations. That's why there was actual mitigation identified there for either construction or participation in other, other projects, where they would actually have to pay, in addition to what they're normally doing, a fair share contribution to something else.
We can't find anybody like Vulcan who'd just donate a few billion dollars to put that on-ramp.
That would be wonderful, I would love to see that, but no, no, it's pretty tough. Actually, I think, you know, we've, we've been pretty fortunate, especially in the last few years. All the jurisdictions joining us have really worked well together, and everybody's participating and trying to help each other. We figured out a long time ago that the state money doesn't like to come up here too much unless we really force it. So, you know, I'm, I'm actually very excited with all the projects that we've got on the books now, and the, the growth of development out in this area has really spurred a lot of interesting things. You know, yeah, it's going to bring some more traffic with it, but I think we've got a pretty good vision of it.
Okay. Anybody else? Steve?
Yeah, I had a question. On page seven of your staff report, said, it says that the full length of the connection Mahogany from Pacific Highway over to Northwest will not be, state and federal grant funds is dependent upon the completion of Costco. Now, it doesn't sound like that's going to happen. Is this incorrect?
It doesn't sound like which is going to happen.
You're going to wait for Costco to be built, then you're going to do Mahogany Avenue?
Well, actually, as the timing stands right now, that's most likely what's going to occur. We, on our schedule, we don't have Mahogany scheduled until 2016. As we understand from Costco, and obviously this is on their schedule, they're scheduled to be constructing next summer, as long as they, they get through all of their permitting processes and things like that. So, we do anticipate that that linkage will be built before the Mahogany linkage will be extended across.
It seems like that's going to be a problem as far as navigating in the area when you're trying to get everybody either on Pacific Highway or off of it, to get, circulate in a manner that doesn't involve Bakerview. It just doesn't seem right.
Well, and again, with the PMF study, some of the mitigation factors were the creation and construction of Mahogany, so there, that development, once the So their, that development, once the, the development permit is pulled, that's reliant on having that access going out through mahogany. Their, their traffic load based on adding it to the Costco traffic load and the, and all the other traffic loads, they, they need to have mahogany to, to make it out, to make things function. Baker, excuse me, Costco, when it came in, because it was ahead of this development in line, its traffic loads actually could function off of what's existing on the bridge, the, the improvements to the bridge and things like that, without having to have mahogany completed at time of opening. So there, under the, the review rules, they, they meet the standards. They, they're within the level of service thresholds that our code calls out.
I'm, I'm a little confused about that. They, they, their studies reflecting that they need to be able to get all the way out to Pacific Highway on mahogany?
Right.
But, and they're only obligated to build the frontage along their property?
For mahogany?
For mahogany?
No, actually they'll have to build all the way out.
Okay, so they'll, yeah.
Yeah, the, the way the frontage issues work, so if you have the front, you have to build your frontage to full three-quarter standard, which is sidewalk and everything. If you still need road to get from that point to the next major arterial and it's reliant, our code allows you to build something less than three-quarters, so, so still driving lanes, what we call a minimum standard, so two, two driving lanes, but not sidewalks, not the rest of the, the arterial standard.
So this is just a curiosity question, but we have all this money that we're applying for and, and if these, this project and the Costco project go forward, they'll build mahogany?
No, they'll build portions of it.
They'll build the three-quarter frontage on their side and then we would still use these resources to finish it out?
Absolutely. Actually, these, if, if both these developments go, they would, they would really make the project whole so that we could finish the entire thing as a, as an urban arterial.
Greg.
I, my, kind of my thought on this is, you know, having a proposal that's concurrent with the rezone request is, is good in a lot of ways, but it's also, can be a bit distracting because when we're looking at the rezone criteria, I think the biggest question is traffic and do the public facilities exist to support this new land use? And I guess my question is, there's already a industrial land use in place. So how much from a traffic standpoint is the additional uses with the new rezone intensifying the traffic demand? And in your opinion?
Yeah, and I actually think the, the development that was proposed with the rezone is one of the higher intensity use types that you would find, much higher than industrial for sure. Industrial uses just usually have a pretty low trip count associated with them. So I do think this analysis was, is, is a fair representation of what you would see. Now, that being said, if, if the rezone is approved, this development doesn't go forward for whatever reason and somebody else comes in with a major development, they will have to do a traffic analysis, a new traffic analysis if it doesn't match the, the existing land use layout. So that we're, again, before development permits go out, we have a pretty good idea of what to expect from a, a traffic, transportation effect.
Well, so from that, you know, perspective then, you know, then one of the criterias just on the rezone is, are there adequate facilities or services are or would be available? So like with this funding that's in place, I see there's some timelines, you know, associated with that. You know, is the, is the infrastructure going to be there when it, when it's needed to meet this traffic demand?
Yeah, and that's what I was trying to explain with the Costco part of it. Costco can actually go in with what's there today and they meet the level of service. So there's enough volume left in the, in the surrounding area to, to meet that. This development would have to have some of these other infrastructure items in place before they could actually open up. But we anticipate, just based on all the timing of everything else that's going on, that everything's going to fall in, in the right order and there shouldn't be any delays.
And Garrett, if I can add to that, on page 16, under the prerequisite considerations, by doing the very nature of looking at a specific land use, which Brent says is probably one of the highest intense uses you could put there from a traffic perspective, what that enabled us to do is to identify that there may be a need, and this is something that allows the city to consider with their land use applications, some participation for future improvements to pack highway, I-5, and it also enabled us to identify that mahogany, that road is going to become an important link. So what it did is it set up the opportunity for staff, when we have land use applications, to be able to require those specific elements to be studied. So it may be the situation where we may not have gone to the level of detail we did because we didn't know possibly the full scope of every single scenario under the land use. But we had the opportunity of looking at something very intense and being able to just, you know, extract from that. So if PMF does not happen, we feel fairly confident that if another very high intense land use comes in, we're covered into being able to require the necessary analysis. So I get what you're saying and it is confusing because we have something very broad, we have something very specific, but we're trying to take this, we're trying to extract the broad, the broadness out of the specific and applying it to the rezone.
Sure.
If that helps.
Jeff?
I have a transportation related question, which is an opportunity to ask you this, but we, I guess I'd point out that level of service E, to one person it might be fuel, full utilization of taxpayer dollars in roads, and for other people, it's a rage inducing near gridlock. And so I may almost be in the latter category because, not road rage, but I, you know, to me, waiting out a couple travel, traffic light cycles on Baker View is a failure in transportation. And I guess my point is, is if we're approaching, we're at E, maybe at some point we get to F if things aren't synced right, but is the, is the light at the end of the tunnel after mahogany's built, after you get build out? The best case is we're going to be back to E or is, is there's some overshoot there where when you look at the build out here, you say, okay, well, we need enough infrastructure, even though it's costing a little more and maybe it's not fully utilized, but we're going to go a little bit higher because there's going to be additional development and as a public good, it's worth it to people to have a little more investment in infrastructure and a little less traffic. Because I keep hearing that level E isn't particularly acceptable to people and that's a lot of concern about this. And if the end result in three or four years after build out and after all these transportation improvements is level E, I think maybe that could be a discussion about whether that's actually what we should be planning. So that's editorial more than a question, but I guess if you have comments on that, it would be useful.
Yeah, actually, really two things. So one, I mean, even with the level of service, the way that arterial streets function, traffic functions, is it's in peaks and valleys. So really you're looking at your, in Bellingham, the typical peak is the PM hour, the five to six, when people are going to have work. This corridor is a little bit different. You have some weekend peaks because obviously Fred Meyer and the, you know, the effect of the ball and that kind of stuff, but it's still in peaks. So the majority of the time, that road actually isn't anywhere close to, to level of service E. So that's, I mean, it's kind of, I guess, my editorial on the level of service area and it is, it's really a question for the comprehensive planning process of as a, as a city, is that still acceptable? Do the trade-offs of density and things like that, are they still okay? Because you may be more difficult to travel through certain areas of town at certain times. The other part is, I don't have modeling to show, you know, yeah, it'll be at a D or a C or whatever. We do truly anticipate, especially with the northbound, the construction of the northbound on-ramp, that will create huge benefit to that area because right now, the, much of the plug happens because anybody who's driving north, who's shopping in this area, has to cross the bridge, cross another bridge to get back on, instead of just getting on and going. So that's what, who's kind of clogs up our bridge, I guess. So we do anticipate good things when that occurs. But also mahogany being built east-west is, it's exciting for geeks like us who look at transportation that we are finally getting a true east-west cup, not couplet, but a connection system to give people other ways around. That's the problem with most of Baker View right now. Everybody, including all of Cordada, flows down to Baker View, then goes over, then goes back up. So we're working really hard to try to add to connectivity wherever we can and this, this opportunity really has stemmed up because of all the interest in the area, not only from this group, not only from Costco, but from everything that's going on out there, the airport, everything, so.
Just a side observation, I live in the Cordada neighborhood and I haven't been on Baker View since June road opened over to Aldridge.
Oh, really?
Taking Aldridge north or taking Aldridge south.
Oh.
It's been, and a lot of people are doing it.
Yeah.
And it's been a real great move for people up in the north end.
Yeah. I will thank one of our local developers for that, who I think is actually sitting here today.
Anybody else? Thank you Brent.
If I could just add one more thing to kind of supplement the questions that Jeff had. Some of the things that Greg pointed out is if you look in the map on page 18, and this is more facts than hypothetical scenarios, that if you look at the northwest corner of sub-area 20 in the Cordada neighborhood, those are predominantly, predominantly wetlands and the city just purchased some of those properties for a mitigation site. So when we're looking at the interface of industrial and residential, it's not anticipated. There will be, there will be very little of any residential development, at least between the creek and that portion of industrial. So there's some natural features and some of what we talked about that are just going to be the, the buffers of the land uses. In addition to that, in Area 20, while it's zoned residential single with a density of 7,200, because of the comparable zoning from the county, when we annex it, there is an opportunity to do some multifamily. And all of the ideas for development of Area 20, at least immediately north of the rezone area and north of Costco, shows that the development would actually put the multifamily closer to mahogany and go to the residential single as it goes north. So again, you're providing a transition to the true single family component of the development. That's the hypothetical part. The, the wetlands are, I mean, they're real and we, the city certainly intends to benefit from their location. So if that's helpful.
Now we're down to public hearing and two people, well, three, but Dave Siegel's already spoken. Jeff Hee and James Spitzer. So Jeff, do you have something to say? How about James?
Good, my name is James Spitzer and I represent the applicant, PMF Investments. We are looking forward to being a community partner and, and representative with the city. And obviously, again, what we are hoping to do here tonight is, is step one and we realize that step two is the land use approvals. And we've had, I feel, a good, at this point, working relationship with, with staff. We recognize that there is a need for some additional improvements, infrastructure-wise, mainly for traffic. And we're working through that to make it work not only for us, but also for the city. Because at the end of the day, whatever we build, you know, it's you as the citizens that are going to be shopping, shopping and, you know, buying the goods that the retailers are offering. And so we want to make that a win-win situation for all of us. So we thank you for tonight and thank you for the time, so.
Thanks, James. Anybody else? Yes, please come up and introduce yourself.
I'm Mike Shunk, Real Estate Development Manager for Fred Meyer, and appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Would have been nice to learn about the project in greater detail much sooner instead of later. There's reference in, in one of the memos to a stakeholder meeting back in late 2013, which I was not aware of or recall ever being invited to that, maybe because of distance between the projects and our property. But this latest request reflects a rezone of 10 acres and then a specific site development of a project containing 142,000 square feet of retail. And I submitted a, a letter to Kathy Bell regarding the rezone and citing that in our opinion, the traffic analysis submitted to date doesn't account for the type of potential uses that could be developed in the additional 10 acres with this type of rezone. The rezone does modify what, what uses were probably considered when the traffic study was developed for the, for the other project. By incorporating the city's retail uses, that there could be an increase in trip generation and traffic with that zoning applied. As, as been described, there was a, a lot of collaboration and effort in 2013 to improve Baker View. We believe that there was a benefit from, from that modification. As Kathy states, it's a dynamic area. There's a lot happening in this immediate region. This is one project of many that's going on. And we just ask that commissioners consider this, this fact that we believe there should be further traffic analysis and as Kathy states, it will come about as site-specific. But it's also a consideration to be made that as part of the rezone and by granting that rezone, you are allowing additional trip generation on this property. So just ask everyone to consider that subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? And we'll close the public hearing. And staff response on anything that you've heard?
I, I think the staff report, because Mr. Shunk did submit in advance of issuing the staff report, staff believes that we've at least addressed, one of their concerns is why was there not a traffic study done specifically for the rezone? And we addressed that, that there's not a code requirement to do that. But we have also addressed that we have a site or a development specific analysis that we were able to extract from that and to put more of the broader range issues into the zoning. So staff believes, at least from the perspective of the rezone, that we have addressed the level of components from Fred Meyer and much of the discussion will happen when we start reviewing the specific land use applications.
Question from Brent. Did, did the TIA that was done for the project contemplate retail uses, like retail trip generation?
Oh, yeah.
Did it only address industrial?
No, no, it actually, it actually looked at what the proposal was that the PMF group is making, which was all retail.
So, so it really did take into account, the, the specific TIA that was submitted did take into account the 142,000 square foot development that is retail in nature?
Yeah, that's what it was based on.
Yeah, and that's a pretty solid development on that property in terms of taking up a lot of space and being like a large development that would be near the top end of what could occur?
Yeah, and, oh, Kathy can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the back half of the property is pretty encumbered by wetlands, which makes it more challenging to develop.
So Mr. Shunk's reference to an additional 10 acres that could be developed, that was not taken, that he's referring to the 10 acres of wetland that is being set aside?
I don't, I'm not sure, but I assume so, but I'm not sure.
I just wanted to make sure that, that, I got the impression that they hadn't looked at retail uses and the traffic analysis and it doesn't sound like that's the case.
No, it's not. And honestly, if there was, if there is an additional 10 acres that are developable and that came in as a development, we would require that they do an additional traffic analysis on that because that would trigger our, our requirements again.
What, what about these, from, from the letter that was submitted by their consultant, McKinsey, that made a number of specific recommendations? This is in July, pardon me, July 21st. It looks, Brent, it looks like the traffic engineer for Fred Meyer reviewed the traffic study prepared for the project and thought that there should be additional improvements made or additional study that should occur? Are you familiar with that letter?
A little bit. Chris actually did the, the review of the traffic analysis itself. I know that there was some back and forth between... I know that there were some back and forth between review comments from the city, the firm that did the study for PMF, and I know Fred Meyer was, provided input to that as well.
Okay.
So as a result of that, that's where the mitigation from the report came out. The final mitigation that the city reviewed and said, yes, we feel that these items really are mitigation factors, that, those were agreed to by the PMF group, that they would participate in those off-site improvements.
And those are consistent with the recommendations of the study that was done for the project?
From their study, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And please keep in mind that the submitted letter from Fred Meyer is not only applicable to the rezone, it's also a public comment to the specific land use applications as well.
I saw that, yeah.
So we sent everything out together, and so the city is considering this a public comment for the entire proposal. So we will take much of those specific comments and address those and review those and analyze those during the application review.
It looks like some of the recommendations are applicable to the specific development, not the rezone, so it was a little bit confusing. Thanks.
Other comments, questions, concerns?
I have one other question I thought of.
Ollie.
The staff report indicates that they applied for bank credit and it was denied, and that they were looking for an alternative. I'm curious if there's been any progress on the critical area permit in regards to how they're going to mitigate the wetland impacts?
That is a great question for the applicant.
Dave?
It's Dave Siegel, meeting Hunt, representing applicant. Yes, there's been a lot of progress, and we have a couple of sites that we've identified and have gotten into a contractual relationship with owners, and have flagged wetlands and have conceptual mitigation plans that are appropriate to mitigate for the wetlands that we're filling on the site. So that was a hiccup that we were denied bank credits, but in the end, it's going to work out, and we're very much on track. There's going to be a meeting here, I think next week, I think, with DOE, Army Corps of Engineers, and discussing that, discussing mahogany, and so things are moving pretty regularly.
Any other questions, comments, editorials? Jeff? No? My goodness. Well, we can all sit here and stare at each other for a while, or maybe we could entertain a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion. Steve? You sure? I'll make a motion, I'll move that we recommend to the council that they approve the findings, facts, conclusions, recommendations, August 7th, 2014.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the findings, facts, et cetera, et cetera. Any discussion on that?
I have to explain why I made that motion, I guess. I, I think that this is tough, just for the reason that Garrett spoke about, where we're looking at, we're looking at a project two, and it's, it's hard not to look at the project specifically, but I think when you look at the criteria that we're supposed to be evaluating the proposal from, from 2019, oh, three, oh, I think both the staff and applicant analysis were pretty good and made it easy to kind of see why the rezone in and of itself meets the criteria. And then I also feel like the, the development regulations we have in place, the requirements that Polk Works has for traffic analysis, and, and the things that come up during the land use permit processes will help to ensure that we're not approving a project without consideration, so, by this act. So that's why I think it's a good, a good idea to move it forward.
Steve?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to support the proposal specifically because traffic analysis is not part of the code requirement for rezones. But just a heads up, that's going to be the primary, primary cause for concern for local residents, and hopefully that all the mitigation will be taken care of, and that traffic flow around, along Baker View can be handled. During a three-day weekend, trying to get into Fred Meyer's is an absolute horror show, and it's terrible. But I think that off-ramp will do some good. I think mahogany, once we get traffic going, Pacific Highway, they get alternatives, go up to Slater. I think all in all, it'll work out pretty good. But just a heads up, it's going to be all about traffic, I really do believe.
Any others? There we go, Jeff.
Well, I, I'll support the rezone. I, I remain a little bit concerned that I think a better process would have been to have this come to us legislatively and tie together Area 1, 21, and 20 to have some conversation about how those pieces fit together in the overall picture. Because again, I don't really see the difference between this and the rest of the one. But that's not what's in front of us, and so I would just suggest that at some point in the near future that this get revisited, not the specific rezone, but get the area revisited, clean up the old Lockham County zoning, and, and come up with a plan for the area that makes sense for traffic, so people can understand what's going on and what's on the horizon. So that's my footnote to this.
Ollie.
I agree with Jeff regarding looking, the Area 1 idea was something I, I made notes on beforehand, and I hadn't thought about it in the context of the growth of our industrial land supply and industrial-specific. And it's really interesting, and my question for staff is maybe, is, is that the kind of thing that we're going to be looking at as a part of the 2016 comp plan update? Cleaning up some of this duplicative zoning and looking at regional zoning and how we're, how we're growing in that regard?
Yes, we are. Specifically, the area that's north of this property, it's a big part of our industrial land supply. So Area 21 and then the area between I-5 and Northwest, all the way up to Slater, we're going to be taking a close look at that area, both for transportation and also just for land suitability. We zoned that industrial a long time ago before wetland rules are what they are, and that area is impacted by wetlands, so it, it may no longer be suitable for industrial. We just don't know yet at this point, but we will be looking carefully at that area because it is, it is a big chunk of our remaining industrial land supply.
I echo Jeff's concerns, and so I'm looking forward to a chance for us to talk about that.
Anyone else? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, zero. Wow. So, let's see. Do we have director's report, or?
Sure, I can update you, the search for a new planning director is underway. The position closes on August 22nd, so get your applications in, those of you that are interested in the job. I know some of you would have to take a pay cut to take the job, but it's a very rewarding job. We expect to be doing interviews of the final candidates early in October, so probably around, if all goes well, around the first of November, we would have a new director onboard.
Great. And we don't have a specific date for our next meeting, is that correct? Wow. Vacation time!
Yeah, I enjoy it, because I think your fall schedule is going to start filling up very soon, so enjoy this time.
Anything else for the good of the order? Jeff?
Go ahead. So, being on the email distribution list for press releases, there was a cryptic press release about land use opportunities in urban villages and elsewhere, and the elsewhere was interesting to me. And I recall in our last action, we, I had suggested that the city tackle the issue of infill in some of the areas, and reading between the lines perhaps, I was wondering if that was the outcome of that, or if that is something else. Could you address that? I don't know if you know the press release I'm talking about.
I don't.
Oh, well, one came out this last week. I assumed everybody got it that's on the distribution list, but it was talking about, I think it was from the mayor's office, and it was talking about the council directing some evaluation of opportunities for economic and additional development opportunities. I don't remember the wording.
Yeah.
But when I read it a second time and I looked at it closely, it was looking at opportunities in urban, in urban villages and elsewhere.
Right.
And I saw infill. So my question is, am I misreading that?
No. Tara Sundine, in her role as the city's Economic Development Manager, is looking at, I think they're called, excuse me, opportunity zones, or something like that. So they would include urban villages and perhaps other areas where we might encourage additional growth. And she's got a work program laid out, and maybe the thing to do is have her come and update you guys, because it will wind up in your laps at some point. So I'll ask her if she'd be willing to do that.
Oh, well, I wasn't necessarily looking for the show. I, I was curious about whether infill was somehow snuck into that, because I know that was something we had requested, I think, as a committee, that that be discussed, and we actually start figuring out how to tackle the interface between infill and single-family zoning. And I don't know if that was the mechanism that was being used, or whether we need to rattle council's cage again?
I think that Tara's project focuses on employment, commercial and industrial development, not residential infill.
Ollie.
We're on the same page on a couple of things tonight. I'll, I'll ask the question a little bit more directly. We, I was at an interesting council meeting on Monday, and a couple of council members made some interesting comments about our infill toolkit. And I think that they were pretty consistent with some of the things that we've brought up wanting to talk about. And about three or four months ago, we talked about, maybe in three or four months, starting to talk about the infill toolkit and things like that, and there was a response we got from staff that said, well, we're, now we're thinking about just adjusting the accessory dwelling unit requirements in the single-family zone, and it seems like maybe now that more people are talking about it openly, it might be the time to ask if we can start that conversation. And I guess that's what, I don't know if that's kind of what you were getting at, but my question is, are we going to talk about the infill toolkit this year? Up here?
We, we can if you like, yes.
I mean, you just, yeah, you said we have a busy fall calendar, and I know we have the comp plan, and we have other things going on, but it, the meeting last week was the perfect example of why we need to talk about this, and I know we've kind of been punting it. And so I guess...
There are some, there are some changes to the infill toolkit that staff would like to make, but the larger question is, where should it be used?
Yes.
And that's, I think, where, maybe where you guys want to weigh in. I mean, there's some technical things that should happen, but where they, where it should be used is the larger question, and that was what council, a couple of council members were referring to. So, yeah, we could have that discussion maybe around the end of the year when things get quiet again.
I'd like to have that conversation. I think the biggest problem with the infill that we see is the multifamily land use designation. People get freaked out about it. You see it in every neighborhood meeting. They come in, they say, well, these are really nice housing forms that are available, what if they don't do them? We're just going to have apartments in our neighborhood. So, you know, maybe a staff has those discussions, they can, you know, entertain the idea of a different land use designation, like an infill land use designation that would require those housing forms that are in the infill toolkit, you know, and that would be an idea of a starting point. That's the major hiccup. I mean, every time something comes through, it's the multifamily that kills it.
Well, we just had the Sunnyland DOT site discussion with council. It's not finished, I was going to update you at some point, but I can tell you that the way it looks like it's going, and we've been directed to prepare an ordinance that would do this, that would leave that Sunnyland DOT site zoned, single-family, but also allow the toolkit. So that would be the first time, and not only allow it, but require it.
That was really kind of, it almost felt like, you know, poking the bear or whatever, that, that whole decision, and I, they were pretty honest and open about it at the council, I felt like, and if, you know, it seems like that might be a good opportunity to keep the momentum, to have the discussion, so, you know, if we can tackle that at some point, I, I mean, you know, we can just ask, I guess. Seems like there might be some consensus.
And we've had a lot of talks with the property owner, and I think they are willing to give this a try, and we are going to work with them to, I mean, we have not as much interest in seeing it work as they do, obviously, but we do have an interest in seeing it work, and they seem to be willing to give it a shot and do a good product, so we'll see.
Mr. Brown?
Well, I, I have a personal reason to do this. This was the reason I got on the planning commission, and it was four years ago, and my term's about up, it's going to be up at the end of the year. And I would really not want to pass into history and dust without having a shot at providing some input into this. And so if I am at, at all in a position to ask a favor, it would be to put this sooner rather than later, so this fall, we can actually tackle this, and I can go out with a bang or something, you know, but I, this is a big interest of mine, and I would like to have the opportunity to hash it out to the extent we can.
Steve?
I believe this is your first term, is it not, Mr. Brown?
It's possible, but I'll probably.
Sorry to hear that. You didn't really, you didn't read the fine print, obviously, in the letter that you got from the mayor that says, it's sort of like a, a team option. We can fire you, but you can't leave on your own.
Well, I haven't decided anything for sure yet, but in any event, in case, I just would like to pick this up before, you know, it gets buried again.
Steve?
Try it again here. A couple of weeks ago, city council decided to docket a matter, I believe Area 4 in the Sammies neighborhood. They decided to docket it directly without any input, going through the normal prerequisites of I E's, the planning commission. Then on the, on last Monday, both in committee and before the council as a whole, they decided to admit they made a mistake, and they're going to go back to the traditional routing of a, of a potential docketing matter, so it's going to come back to us. And I, I, I was kind of upset when I first heard about this. You know, I hope to think that we add value to the, to the process, but it's coming back to us, and I appreciate that. And again, I want to acknowledge city council for stepping up and revising that docketing matter. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Steve. So you, you looked at the two proposals that we got for docketing. By the time it got to city council, there was a third group that wanted to have their proposal considered for docketing. There's a provision in our code that says council can docket something at any time. And so that's how this happened. This sort of was one of those things that just came up, it came up after you had completed your review. Steve's exactly right, the council said, go back and go through the docketing process, and then we'll consider adding you or not. So they will go hold a neighborhood meeting, they'll file an application, they'll do the normal things, and it'll come to you for recommendation, so.
Ollie. Just briefly to Jeff's comment, I know we don't control the calendar, and, and you guys have a lot to manage on your plate, but I, the infill is such a, a big part of what we talk about in terms of accommodating our growth, and we want to make it work, but we haven't. And it demands, it's going to be controversial and demands a really robust discussion, I think, and I think it would be remiss if we didn't get to hear Jeff's thoughts, because he brings a good perspective. And so if there's a way, I'd support that request, because I do think it's, it's, Jeff has been talking about this as long as I've been on the planning commission, which is not yet two years, but still, it's clearly something that's important. And it's such a big part of what we're trying to do with our comp plan, why not get on it? So I know we can't tell you what to do, but if we can, if we can move it up so we can talk about it with this group, that would be really great.
We can't tell you what to do?
No.
Any other?
It apparently doesn't stop you from trying, though, right?
Okay. If there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.